Evening, everybody. Uh, to the joint meeting of the plan development. Subcommittee town council meeting Wednesday. May seventeenth at six P M. Then I have number one is roll call. Counselor Adams is present. DeeDee. Catherine. Thank you. Just happened.
This is the season, right? Allergies?
But I don't have allergies. Something got stuck in there. Thank you. Counselor Lazo, is that absent? Dow is absent. Alright, um. Number two, consider accept plan and development meeting minutes of May first twenty, May first twenty twenty-three. Alright. Discussion. Okay, all those are favorable. Item number three, discuss review whether to recommend town council approve a plan for the one stop for growth for the following grants. Mass Works, Community Planning Grant Program, Urban Agenda, Brownfield. Brownfields and underutilized properties, all one hundred percent funded. Whose projects are prescribed in the supporting documentation. Entertain motion to town council to recommend applying and to authorize town manager to sign any related paperwork. Alright. Miss Dean.
As of uh maybe five years ago, the one stop uh for growth. Allows towns to apply for up to five grants at a time. It's supposed to streamline the application process and the planning process. Uh it's also supposed to help the state see what our priorities are easier. Uh and so last to the last two years in a row, we applied through a similar motion. For quite a few uh grants. Uh last year, we applied for, for instance, the mass works that we won for East Main Street. We haven't started yet. The Urban Agenda Grant, which is happening down in Central Street Parking Lot for the murals and the concerts. We applied for Brownfields Grant for uh a mill property, which we haven't been able to access yet. And we applied for um an underutilized properties program grant for um. A piece, I think for two oh five Main Street, uh which we didn't get. Um so we did pretty well last year. We got three out of the five that we applied for. This year, we're going for uh five grants initially for the Mass Works Grant. The town had proposed a great idea of trying to go for sidewalk money to be able to. Well, uh not so happy ending though. So we applied for um the town council brainstormed about um how to um. Use the Mass Works money, which is supposed to be to promote economic development. In front of storefronts that are investing in themselves, which is a great idea, but then when we brought the idea to the state through the expression of interest where you're supposed to get feedback. The state said you'd have to have all of those plans designed in advance. And what they had proposed was people apply throughout the year, sort of like our housing rehab for the funds. And then we approve who we think would be a good fit and we go ahead with it in conjunction with the D P W or with the D P W's lead, however it works. Um and and unfortunately, that wasn't okay. So we submitted our expression of interest in April. We got feed in in. The end of March, we got feedback in April. We would have had to have designed some sidewalks that we would go forward with. And applied in time and you know with the lead time it takes to get approval to hire somebody to do the design and then to apply for.
What would be the cost of the design?
Oh, on average, it's about ten percent of a project. And so they were proposing, you know, a million to two million on sidewalks. So that would be a hundred to two hundred thousand for design. Um but again, because of the lead time, right? If we were getting this feedback in mid-April, it takes about three weeks for me to get something in front of the town council. Uh so if I was to go out for quotes and then try to bring something to town council, it was probably highly unlikely would we would have been able to actually hire somebody. And then be able to be ready for it. So I came to the D B W director. Um and suggested to uh many others, the town council as a whole in an email. Um we had just gotten the cost estimate for the River Crane Street Project, which is upwards of two point eight million dollars. And we have the design. And it was completed in January, but we were waiting for things to settle in at the D P W. Before getting uh together and reviewing it, et cetera. And so in finding out that expense, Charlie was in the middle of figuring out the budgets. And I thought this might be the best use of potential mass works funds. It can be justified that it's economic development because you have the twelve Crane Street kind of being revitalized. Hearing about the rail trail kind of right rejuvenated their um investors. So now they have uh potentially Stonewall Kitchen coming into twelve Crane. They have um this Centro Slos America um doing furniture building in their basement. Uh which is workforce development. Wow, Mass Works love that. We're going right by Dexter Russell, one of our, you know, linchpin manufacturers. Um we are uh investing in one, you know, one of our low moderate income areas. So it kind of, it meets a lot of, I think, what the the criteria would be for a mass works grant. Um so I would recommend that we go for that project. Then for the Community Planning Grant, um back in twenty twenty-one, we did an Urban Agenda Grant. The Urban Agenda Grants um goals were to educate the redevelopment authority about their powers and and come up with some immediate. Medium and long term goals. One of the immediate goals was to go for a major amendment to the plan. Initially, the urban renewal plan said the fire station should go at sixty-seven Central. Well, we all know that plan has changed. Um it had called for a parking garage in the Central Street Parking Lot. We all know that has changed. And now we're going to have a fire station almost inside the urban renewal, but not quite inside there. And so if we could stretch the urban renewal area to include the fire station, maybe we could help ensure that whoever. You know, the next future tenant is is someone that we can actually have some some say in. The other piece is there were a couple other properties that weren't called out um that I would like to see included in. So uh that would be uh a a big win if the town could get back. The Urban Agenda, I'm asking for again, the concerts and the mural, except the mural this time would be on Alex Patel's building at the back of sixty-seven Central. Um Brownfields would be for the um if we can get a letter from Mr. Colignesi uh for the property across from the D P W. Uh that may have potential contamination. We have potential developers interested in the, they have two large adjacent swaths of property. Um that just need to get a probably, you know, a phase one to assure everybody that the property is worth developing. Uh and the underutilized properties, I'm proposing uh three eighteen Main Street. It's the property adjacent to the empty lot where the fire was. And so if you picture, you know, if the McCarthys are now finishing that building. Then the the Clemenses have assured everyone that once that's done, they'll come in and build. And then if you were to invest in three eighteen, you've got, you know, an entire half of a block redeveloped. That could be a large impact, in my opinion. So I'd love to be, see the town be able to help him. Um and that's.
It's a hundred percent funded too, right?
And they're all one hundred percent funded.
So the town doesn't have to put in anything.
Except for our blood, sweat and tears throughout the entire process. Yes.
Okay, any questions?
Oh, you've got questions?
Oh, um Counselor Marcati. I didn't see.
When the new fire station is done and completed and everything, what will happen to the old building? Will they keep it or?
So our prior town manager had always talked about how it'd be a great brewery. But in order for, the town obviously has to go through procurement. Uh if we auctioned a property or we did an R F P for a property. Uh we still may not have as much uh say over it as if it was in the redevelopment authority. Um in those instances, you can actually kind of pick and choose.
So it's not within that zone?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That all happened?
Sure.
Counselor Marcati.
As far as the fire station, we're probably gonna have to do something about that building regardless because it has fallen apart so. And that's why we were trying to go conservative this year with capital. Cause we wanna save some money for things like that for this town. Get off the subject. The Crane Street, uh I think it's a good idea if we can't get the sidewalks. And we don't want to lose that money, so. And I've always felt that finishing Crane Street, hopefully you can finish it all the way to Pleasant Street. That would be nice. Lot of people work at here and at Russell Harrington. And because a lot of people work there, they drive that street. It's also very dangerous down there, so if it can. If you can add to it, that would be helpful, I think. It would be an idea to finish that road. I don't know if you can or not. Three eighteen Main Street, what's in there right now? Is it looking for something or something or is it like a bar or something?
It's completely shut down.
Yeah.
This is the place that was um. Yeah, the bottom, it was, this is where we had a lot of legal action over there where individuals were living in closets. Um did at least two, only two closets. Um and it was kind of a, I wouldn't say a rehab place, but a.
Halfway house.
Halfway house, um and yeah, so it's all boarded up at this point in time on the top end, right?
And if I may, I don't wanna say halfway house to give a bad name to any legitimate halfway houses. They were an illegitimate business, the way they were boarding people and and.
They were receiving money from the state too, I believe, with some of that.
And um inspections came in and found the code violations that were beyond acceptable condemned the property. And that was in the summer of twenty twenty-one. An investor came in uh and has been great, has been uh working. Trying to figure out how to most affordably um uh get access to the upper floors. Um has been talking to the neighbor next door about potentially purchasing, has been uh lever, trying to get investors. Um and has been working very hard. We met with the Worcester Chamber of Commerce. At a large um at a, an event about opportunity zones. Um we all met there to kind of um get the ear of the experts about how do we take advantage of that here in Southbridge? Um and he had um his partner with him, Mark Hill. So Julio Vega and Mark Hill are the two gentlemen. And they were working with um some investors out of New Jersey who were sort of on the brink of investing. Mark and Julio, I was giving them as many updates as possible about all the great things the town is doing to position itself. They all believed in the town. They thought it was a great story. The investors from New Jersey thought that we had a lot to offer. But then as the market started to turn a little bit last fall, they got a little hesitant. And then they started to hear about the staff changes. It made them a little even more reluctant. And so we haven't really seen them resurface since. Obviously now it's it's gotten worse and worse. But I I believe in Julio. He turned a house around in this town already that was affected by fire. And then um developed a, an old schoolhouse in Worcester, did a great job with both. Uh and would just like to see this property turned around. We only have so many funds left in the ARPA Commercial Loan Program. Uh so this would be just be another similar tool, except through the state instead of us.
Yeah, there was a sprinkler system issue that I believe too as well.
That's why they hooked up all the, when they did Main Street, they hooked them all up so they can install sprinklers.
They can, but the people that were living upstairs, there was a, there was no um exit. It was double locked inside, so they actually, there was no um.
Egress.
Egress, thank you. Uh for them to get out. And plus then the sprinkler system was all messed up. And I don't know how long it been, since it's been inspected, but.
This guy's from New Jersey, huh?
No, he is not. Yeah, no, Julio Vega, you can look him up. Um white picket fence. Yeah, no, the people that, the developers that uh we were uh that were looking at.
He didn't say anything about, he just said, it's kind of like retail restaurant storefront, but he didn't say what what he's thinking of bringing in.
Because you can't, you can't really get commitment from people with the building and the shape it's in. Yeah, uh unfortunately. So that's sort of the the chicken and the egg issue we deal with all the time with these property owners. You know, for them to just go ahead and blindly invest outfit a space without having someone come in. And say they're gonna move in, but the person, you know, isn't gonna say they're gonna move in with the building and the condition it's in. So you know, there's, there's oftentimes this sort of um this courting, right? Someone tries to court the business into coming along with them for this, you know, development project. Um and he hasn't found the right fits yet.
And the Brownfields, what property is that on the road?
Right across from the D P W. Correct, and it's all because of that. So you've got Quintera, right? They are their own parcel. Right behind them is um who bought that property, DePietro.
Yeah.
And then you have two much larger parcels that are almost, I don't know, twenty-five acres each. Owned owned by, I don't remember the, who the actual name is in the assessor's data database, but the Colignesi brothers are the ones affiliated with the property. And we've had developers come to us a few times saying it looks like a good fit, but. And so we're trying to help that. Rosemary had talked about going forward with the Brownfields uh grant, but I don't think she ever did. And so we're just trying to follow through.
And none of it could be used on the D P W because we're gonna have to address that at some point.
I actually don't know anything about the D P W property. I've never dug into it. Yeah.
Used to be owned by the.
No pun intended.
The cotton factory. The cotton's used on it.
So I've heard. So that's what I thought. And then someone corrected me and said, don't say that.
I don't wanna use the word dump anymore.
No, I said landfill. And they said, don't mention that. So I don't know.
There was no lighting, no nothing, so it was a dump.
It was a dump.
Alright, that's all I have.
And related to the mass develop, uh mass development Brownfields funding. Um so we are, we have one right now. We have worked our tails off to try to get access to this mill property. And we've had no luck. We've asked Mass Development, will we be penalized because we didn't follow through on this one grant that we have right now? If we were to turn back those funds or technical assistance? And they said, no, by all means, we understand circumstances are circumstances. Please go ahead. This is one show of Mass Development kind of believing in what we're trying to do here in Southbridge. They know we're working our tails off, trying really hard to turn some of these properties around, and they're not gonna punish us for it.
Now the uh, I'm sorry, John, go ahead. I'm sorry, Counselor Marcati, you all set? Okay, Counselor Dan.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, Senator Dean. Um it's only twenty-four hours in the day.
I know.
Is there anything coming off the back end?
No. I mean, uh I am happy to say, you know, we're we're moving projects along. Of course, you know, and I would love to clone myself a couple times over. Um I'm very lucky. I've got Katie downstairs now to help me with the C D B G stuff. Um and I understand Eric's now talking to Margaret Morrissey again about E V chargers. And so, you know, I feel like everybody's pitching in and doing their part, but um you know, this is, we don't wanna slow down. Like I've said a few times, this is, you know, the, let's strike while the iron's hot. We hear talk about, you know, the compromises in the federal budget might be with discretionary funding. You know, if we don't get our hands on some of the funds that are available, that, you know, to get them committed to us. We, those funds may be turned back to the federal government, right? So we wanna go for all we can. Not to say that the Mass Works Grants are our federal discretionary funds. But it's an example of, you know, there, there is a lot of funding out there right now. Let's, let's try and do what we can for the town. It's our time.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Uh DeeDee.
Three eighteen Main Street again, where is that? Is that?
Three eighteen?
Is that what you said?
Three eighteen. So yes, so you're looking at the fire, the lot that had the fire.
Yep.
It's the one to the left of it. It's the one that.
The old Matthews, is it old Matthews?
Goodwins or?
Goodwins or Matthews?
I think so.
It was Ed Pickett's building. Oh no, Ed Pickett is the next one over.
Was the old uh Goodwins, that's what you said? It's the old Goodwins, okay. I get a better idea. So where is the?
So if you are at the Redmond's, it's the one to the left of it.
Okay. And my second question is, you wanna do that Brownfield thing across the D P W. What are the intentions with that property? If it clears?
Oh, uh we don't know. I mean, we've had, we've had um what our realtors come to us and say. I have confidential clients. I can't tell you who they are. But they're looking for, you know, four hundred thousand square feet. Or they're looking for, you know, uh whatever.
We're still under the small housing.
Yeah, no, it doesn't sound like it. It's more commercial. And that's why that property is well suited, because it's already zoned for manufacturing, right? You have butt shot right there and the A O.
Yep.
Yeah.
Also, thank you.
Any other questions? All those are favorable, opposed, three zero.
Thank you.
Number four, discuss review whether to recommend town council accept the community compact best practice. For a curbside collection analysis for thirty-five thousand dollars entertain a motion to town council to recommend acceptance. And to authorize the town manager to assign any related paperwork.
A second.
Okay.
Counselor Marcati, may I, may I defer to someone?
Sure. Absolutely.
Would you like to speak on this?
The only thing that I would say, since we're not really, I guess that makes sense. We're compact best practice for a curbside collection analysis, we're, but it's analysis for an enterprise fund. To run the curbside collection. I mean, I went on, when I was looking at D L S to see, you know, how does a municipality adopt an enterprise fund? Has to be approved by the council. Vote should state what the service for the fund is. Uh the municipality will vote to accept the provisions, chapter forty-four, so forth and so on, to establish. This case, it would be a curbside garbage collection operation as an enterprise fund. D L S recommends beginning at the fiscal year, so it'd probably be next fiscal year, the end of, you know, about June. And then, once approved, a separate fund is established in the process of identifying assets, liabilities and equity belonging to the enterprise. So that's why I recommended that we try and get a cost analysis done on creating an enterprise fund. I was thinking that Counselor, uh Town Manager McCall and Karen Harmonis could have done it in-house. But then, as we've said, they left. So then I reached out to D L S and I asked, what can we do to get a cost analysis? Cost analysis done on an enter, starting an enterprise fund? And they said, well, we can provide you a consultant and they said that to look for the grant. And so then I, I forwarded it to the town manager and he forwarded it to G, to Peggy Dean. And so the financial team and responsible department head should clearly delineate all costs and expenditures. Associated with, associated with the enterprise fund. So I don't know if the funding, if you think that this language is correct, but I think what we're doing is, is getting the grant to. For a, for an enterprise fund for curbside collection analysis, something like that. We're not really studying curbside collection. We're studying the creation of an enterprise fund. But I'll leave it to you if you think that this is, this is fine. I'm not sure it will matter to the consultant or not, but that's what we're doing. We're asking the consultant to do a cost analysis for the creation of an enterprise fund.
So go ahead, Miss Dean.
So just reading the email, um Counselor Marcati is exactly right. So it's a, conducting a cost benefit analysis for a curbside collection enterprise fund. If the council wanted, if you wanted to make a uh an amendment to the motion for the town council.
Where so, what would you like to put it in there? I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. May I? So recommends cost curbside collection enterprise fund.
Okay, that's what I thought. Alright.
Enterprise fund analysis.
Hey, just, I'll just add that price in there. You got it, thank you.
Nice panel.
Thank you. Alright. So I guess my, you know, there's been a lot of talk the last few days. Um with the curbside issue of the billing and all that kind of stuff. Would this cost analysis make a recommendation, like a third party biller? Would it, or would we do it at house?
No, he would, what they would do, according to D L S. They would identify assets, liabilities and equity belonging to the enterprise. Uh they delineate all costs and expenditures associated so that a fair and equitable rate structure can be developed. I don't think they would be recommending who would do the billing, but that would be part of it.
But it would give us some type of rate based on the contract, I'm assuming? The contract will come up, cause we'll be.
Because if you're gonna start an enterprise fund, you gotta come up with a rate, how much you're gonna charge the residents.
Yeah, well, once we.
Look at the whole thing and say, oh, this is how much you should be charging.
I know the T M is is working on with Anna, the R F P. And I think they're presenting that in front of us in the next, in June sometime. So, I mean, I think we would have hurt, like, let's just say we didn't need this. Just, just say, would have hurt us. And I would recommend bringing it up, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, i- is it something that we should do with this take? The work off the town manager a little bit and the, and Rachel, who will probably be doing some of this work along with the accountant, treasurer. Okay, okay. No, I have no problem at all. I just wanted to see, it would have hurt us if if it was one of those grants we said, nah, we're okay. Yeah.
In my experience, the community compact is one of the most local oriented um programs that the state has created. If you couldn't find use for the thirty-five thousand dollars in technical assistance for the enterprise fund analysis. My opinion is that you could potentially um alter the scope with the permission from Sean Cronin to look at other things. I would consider bolstering your resources towards this new, um you know, new curbside issue. And like you said, it could take it off the shoulders of the staff a tiny bit or add some input into what direction to go. I wouldn't say just because it's free money, you know, if we really didn't need it, genuinely didn't need it, you know, why take it? But I think that there'll be other questions that come up.
This is a little toolbox.
Yes.
All tools, okay. Okay. Uh uh any questions on it? Oh, I'm sorry. This, the, I can't see the phone right there. John, go ahead.
Hi, my corner.
Sorry.
For, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. The uh, in speaking with the town manager today, he was, he was a, uh, he felt that it would be nice to see this passed.
Is that all? Cut, close it down.
Just a quick question. I don't understand all of the enterprise fund stuff. I did some research. You have so much money there. What happens if so many people bow out of the town collection? And we run in a deficit? Where are you gonna come up with the money, the difference with that fund? Where would that money come from?
It would most likely increase the the payment quarter. Unless the town council decided it was somehow or another, we're gonna use other funds to help offset it.
If I may through you, yes. This, those are great questions for potential analysis. You know, it's modeled after a business. So the idea of an enterprise fund is, you know, you are, you are like in a private enterprise, money in, money out. If you can't bring the money in, or you know, then you therefore have to increase your rates, just like the counselor said. The airport is an enterprise fund. Um and so, you know, it rents its hangers for income, right? It's always looking at, at, you know, money in, money out, operating as a solvent business. And 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 then if it had to, yes, then it could come to the town. But uh I think that the, more of the ideal is that you depend on your rate system.
Ideally, it pays for everything that includes.
That would be the person doing the billing? It would pay for that person?
It should, yes, that's a.
So everything should come out of that particular account?
If I, if I may through you, I guess, I'm, I'm speaking very liberally here, you know, I, I, I don't know the details. So I think that that might be something good for the analysis.
There's a lot of avenues, you know, when it comes. No, go ahead.
Well, you have water and sewer.
Yep.
We have a management team running it and we pay them and it comes out of the ratepayers' water and sewer bills. And then, but I also think there is some money for administration at the top hall because we're sending out the bills. But it all comes out of the ratepayers. So it's not coming from the taxpayers, it's coming from the ratepayers. So what I, I would presume, everything associated with curbside would be coming from the people who are using the curbside. Believe me, I, I didn't think, well, this is a good way to go, but the council decided this was the best way to go, so this is how it would work. So it would be the ratepayers, they would pay for all of the funding for curbside.
And if they didn't make enough for the enterprise fund, then the rates would all go up for everyone?
Probably have to go up though.
Yeah, so the enterprise fund is not a mandatory thing. Or you, you add bags to it if you, you have an option to add bags. Doesn't cover municipal.
Trying to keep it low so people won't.
That's right.
But they do have the option.
So there's a great question that happened today. It was, I think it was an awesome question. Is it the, um, one thing that I thought was really good about this is paid by the unit. So if you have a six family unit, right, you have six units.
Right.
So uh one question from a resident was brought up about do, why split it? Like you have a duplex, but I, we share a totter. No, it's a duplex, so it's two units. They, it keeps that away from me, you and all of us getting together, just throw it in one totter and only paying for that one totter when there's three homes.
Exactly.
So it, you know, I, I think it, to be honest with you, is low enough where I don't see many people opting out of it, you know, so.
And if they do opt out, they have to prove it, that they are getting a garbage made go.
But that's the original question.
Is it going to be another, maybe I should have asked this question to the committee itself. I'm trying to think how to put this. Is there gonna be a limit as to how many units per house?
Six.
Six is the tops, okay. So at the six, you have to get your own dumpster?
Correct. However, there was talk about allowing businesses to opt in. So I suppose technically, if you have more than six and it's considered now a business, you might be able to opt in.
Absolutely.
Churches asked me, could we opt in? Cause they would like to get involved, cause they are, they have to rent a dumpster. And they don't mind doing that, except that they throw everything in there, including recycling. And I said, well, we have been talking about allowing businesses and others to. And I said, well, we have been talking about allowing businesses and others to opt in to this system, and I think you can do that.
So if you're talking to church, would that would just be one individual? Like, say that I'm paying forty dollars a month. Would the church pay forty dollars? Because it's just one.
Well, I would say I would leave that up to those that are starting to make the bylaws, once the contract's done. And the town accepts that contract in, then all the particulars will go in to play it from the board of healths piece of the bylaw and how it's supposed to go, like the trash is now, trash by law. I'm sure that has to be tweaked for the new enterprise fund.
I just get confused with it all. That's all, I'm just trying to.
But this is a perfect opportunity.
Good question though, because some people, I know, my neighbor's got all of his kids living with him, and he puts an unbelievable amount of trash out. I put maybe one or two bags, so he's gonna pay the same that I pay, so, but that's how it works.
That's how it works, yeah.
I just don't know how you get around that.
Yeah, unless you weigh everything in, which that's gonna cost a lot of money, yeah, so. But that's, those are good questions that I guess when the board of health starts working their bylaw and then the town works their bylaw, you know, to, 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 to make sure. Those are great questions to be able to ask. So the guidelines will be provided with an option, but I think that's more of a board of health question uh, when they start working on that, yeah.
I would ask, actually, uh, when the agenda item comes up on Monday, because I'm ignorant, I was only wrapped in, um, brought into this because of the grants portion of it, you know, to do the, the actual applying. Um, you know, would you, would the Council, would Council Marquetti speaking on it be more appropriate, uh, rather than?
Yeah, I, I would back him up on this whole thing. Anything we had to conversate, I mean, I think if, even if it's, you're the grant expert, he's been doing the curbside the entire time, so it's, you know, I would be, be willing to say a piece as, as well, but. Yeah, I mean, but I think we have enough information to be able to get this thing through. Yes, ma'am.
And then, if I may, through you, I just should um clarify that, um, the reason we had to bring the last agenda item to the town uh during a budget meeting is because it's due June second. And the reason we're bringing this one to the town, even though it's a budget meeting, is because it was very relevant, sort of time-sensitive. Councilor Marquetti's been waiting and um eager to see this process started. So, thank you.
Before we vote on this, real quick, agenda number three, I'll go back. Agenda number three, you need to go up on, okay? On the twenty-second, alright. The agenda number four, Pat, okay, twenty-second. You got Steve Brady's.
And, uh, I mean, I leave the, whether it's on the twenty-second up to town, uh, up to Councilor Marquetti. I think he spoke with Council Chair Daniel about whether to bring it. Did you, the, the curbside, this one?
Number four.
Well, if you need an answer, bud.
If you need an answer, yeah, bring it forward. If it's time-sensitive, bring it forward.
It's not, it's not. It was a matter of whether Councilor Marquetti felt like it was time-sensitive. I knew you were.
It's not time-sensitive? I thought you said it was.
Oh, the, the, the one-stop-for-growth is June.
The one-stop is June, so, yeah.
The community compact ones, uh, we have two community compacts. We brought this one forward because we thought you wanted it as quickly as possible.
Well, I do, but I mean, it doesn't seem to me like this would be a big deal.
Then the fourth we go on, June. It sounds like the fourth we go to June.
Alright, so we'll put that on twelve, June?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanna make sure Hannah knows this. And we also have, oh, okay.
Is it June twelve?
June twelve.
Oh, okay.
So that is a problem. No?
No, no.
No, we were, actually, I think you and I were talking yesterday, and we thought it was the fifth, right?
I did, I thought the fifth. And so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I checked.
I thought, when you said the twelfth, I thought you were talking about a subcommittee, and I was like, oh, no, we're not going to town council.
No, I said that to you because you, because, yeah, I checked myself when I took a look at the calendar.
Got it.
Alright, alright, so we're good. We'll do that on twelve. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor?
I'm not sure, but, okay. There's no money coming from us, from the town?
No. And, and, and this is the, the, the third of the best practices the town is allowed to apply for. It all worked out so serendipitously for us, we asked to go to the, um, we'd asked for an IT assessment through the community compact because Margaret was looking for infrastructure at the library, but didn't really know what her needs were. Victor is new and doesn't really understand, you know, what the IT infrastructure requirements are, if we wanted to do some kind of um internet upgrade. So we were talking to the state already about doing a community compact best practice for fifty thousand dollars to do this IT assessment. And then, um, Councilor Marquetti started advocating for this. I hadn't quite hit the submit button on the application for the IT, and he said, go ahead and add it to your community compact. So now we're able to get sort of double the value out of this award.
So it's been accepted?
And they've both been awarded as our last best practice. We got one for fifty thousand for the IT and then one for the curbside um enterprise analysis.
Let's go ahead and move on. We get the, we got agenda number five, is review discuss accepting the agreement from Mass DOT for one point four five two million dollars towards the town's one point five million match towards our Economic Development Administration, EDA, grant of four point one million, with two point six million coming from the EDA, entertain a motion to town council to recommend acceptance and to authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved. A second. I, there's only two of us here.
Good news.
Good news. Then we can meet for discussion?
No, not really. That was excellent.
Yeah, it's great that they got it covered. And, I mean, so I just wanna say, we, before I went on vacation, this was something that was like, now we gotta come up with this money and, and, and sure enough, so thank you for all the work you did to make sure this, the state paid for it, so.
I just wanna publicly thank Nass DOT for supporting our project. They've been absolutely wonderful. Mass Trails people have been wonderful. They're already thinking about how they can help us fund a bridge.
Is the bridge by the Rotary?
Oh. Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on it? Yeah, Councilor Marquetti?
So the only question I had is that, um, it seems to be ever-changing totals since the beginning of this. I, I understand that the council wants this to happen, but at one point, the one point five million match, we were only gonna put in four hundred thousand. We were gonna get some funds from the state for the, uh, one point one, or something close to that, for the one, for the one point five million match. But now, from what I'm reading here, that's no longer the case. We have to come up with the entire one point five million?
No, so this is great news for us. What it was originally was what you just said.
And, and then.
And then it turned out.
We got the Mass Trails grant.
Yeah.
So then we turned back three hundred.
So we turned the money back in, we were using ARPA money, there was a switch in of where to get these funds, and then all of a sudden they came out of nowhere and said, no, you can't use this. Was it the three hundred?
If I, could I, but, yes. So I, working with the EDA is a whole different experience than any other agency, I will say that. To Councilor Marquetti's point, you know, it's been this sort of negotiation all along of, you know, you don't need funding, but then when you apply, you're told, well, you don't have enough, you really need to, to do a little bit of a match if you wanna qualify. But wait, that's not enough of a match. And, you know, if we want to qualify for the funds, we just keep having to figure out how to make them happy. And, and then, when we got the Mass Trails grant, they said you can't use the Mass Trails money for a designer who's been involved with your feasibility study or your, um, uh, or your application. And so we said, okay, can we exclude the Mass Trails funds, do the design on our own, and then we'll go forward with you for the construction? And assumed that the, that the award would just be reduced by the amount of the design, and we just keep them discreet. And then, when I went and submitted my first financial report, I was like the kid who had just failed a test. I mean, I felt like I just, you know, had, had failed the town. It was the worst feeling ever. And so, I'm, I'm gonna cry. It was like a very, very big deal. And then, Mass DOT, out of nowhere, said, that's fine, we'll cover you.
Excellent.
So, uh, we're still kicking up a hundred thousand.
Blood, sweat, and tears, yeah.
So, you did great. We appreciate it. So your answer to the question is still one hundred thousand dollars that we have to kick up? It, it went back and forth on the fine print, I guess, uh, and so there was a concern that we may have to go to ARPA, or we may have to take out a state, another fund to cover that three hundred, but state turned around and said, we got it. We'll take care of that, so there.
So what does this mean then? Our EDA project manager clarified that in fact, we are still required to raise one point five locally for construction.
So the one point one was coming from Mass DOT?
Right.
And, and the four hundred was coming from, and three hundred was coming from Mass Trails, and one hundred was coming from us. Then we had determined we were gonna separate the Mass Trails funds out, and we would have the one point one from Nass dot and the hundred from us, and we were gonna go forward. And they said, no, no, you still have to have the, the full one point five. So, then it gets even more complicated. If I'm using the one hundred towards the Mass Trails, I can't doubly count it towards the EDA grants. So we were actually about three hundred fifty, the exact amount of the design, short. So, so Mass DOT is providing us one point four five two, and the remaining forty-eight thousand dollars we have for Mass Trails that isn't committed to the design is also being um included in the, in the local match. And then we did the, the design through Mass Trails, and the, the hundred thousand local match actually becomes this sort of contingency fund of an extra hundred thousand dollars that we can't count towards the EDA fund. So, um, it's a lot of um juggling, right?
I just don't understand what the sentence, why they're saying, in fact, we are still required to raise one point five locally.
Which, and local means non-federal. How's that?
State took care of it.
Which we did raise miraculously, yes. It was wonderful.
Is that?
Tetris.
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 Okay, do you think, any other discussion on this? None? Okay, all those in favor? Nass Hall President, most in the room?
Uh, so, second.
Okay, all those in favor? Zero.